Good evening, everyone, and welcome to another meeting of the Inkster City Council. Before we get started, I would ask Pastor Gene Overman if you could come and give us a prayer today, please. I really appreciate that. And as she comes before us also too, I would like to have a moment of silence for the passing of James Owens. The owner of Owens Car Wash passed away in his funeral was this past weekend.
And we had Tyrone Murphy today.
And Tyrone Murphy, please. A moment of silence and then we'll have prayer from Gene Overman. Pastor Overman?
Good evening, everyone. Let us all pray. Father, we thank you today for your amazing grace and your love. We thank you for the city of Inkster, for those that made the decision to serve. We thank you for every administrator, every resident, all of us that live, work, play, and love here. I thank you for understanding and insight into the work they do, that we will be a supportive community of the work, that we will bring our hands to the mission, and that we will leave a place in legacy and generations that will appreciate what we've done. We thank you for the leadership, for the hearts of the people that live and don't quite understand everything happening, but they continue to work in faith. So as we, as people of faith, and we thank you that we are, we believe in something so much greater than ourselves, and that's who we are together. Teach us to be collective, to understand the power of synergy, to understand the power of our collective gifts and voice. Amen.
Amen. All rise for pledge allegiance to the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Roll call, please, Madam Clerk.
Councilmember Watley.
Present.
Councilmember Washington.
Present.
Councilmember Shaw. Councilmember Chisholm.
Here.
Councilmember Williams.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tim Howard.
Here.
And for the record, Mayor Wimberly.
Here.
We have a bull house.
Thank you very much. Getting right into it, approval of the agenda.
So moved.
Support, I mean second.
Been moved and second. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any nays? Ayes have it, motion carries. Going right into presentations. All right, Jane, the public hearing. All right, do I have a motion to open up the public hearing?
So moved, Mr. Chair. Second.
Moving properly, second. Any discussion that relates to that? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any nays? Ayes have it, please, Jane.
Thank you, Mayor and councilmembers, this evening for giving the public an opportunity to have a more thorough understanding of the marijuana ordinance updates that we're proposing. The Planning Department has undertaken revisions to the city's marijuana ordinance along with the administration and the Planning Commission. The Planning Commission did hold a public hearing at their November 28th meeting. That was after multiple working sessions reviewing the material we're going to go over this evening. The goal of these revisions is to make the ordinance easier to administer and more socially just. The department is working to ensure that these new regulations are fair and equitable and that they consider the needs and the concerns of the community. We have heard that the system is, needs to be more socially equitable at multiple public hearings for the special land uses for marijuana establishments that we've had with the city council over the last year. We also know that it needs to be more efficient and effective. So our hope is to address this with any potential, mitigating any potential negative impacts that marijuana use and the cultivation has on the community. And in order to effectively do so, we've proposed a revision of the Chapter 124 business licensing, as well as the zoning regulations as it relates to marijuana in Chapter 155. They are both, you both have, you received both for reference, and then I'll just go through the marijuana zoning ordinance update with a brief summary. The marijuana ordinance amendment proposes the creation of a green zone between Henry Rough and Middlebelt where marijuana retailers would not be subject to the thousand-foot separation buffer from like retailers. This would eliminate four overlapping buffers for businesses that have been approved. The amendment offers two options for the location of all retailers, either allowing them in the current districts as it stands, or restricting them to the green zone only. So you have option one and option two. It should be noted that the Planning Commission has recommended allowing retailers in existing districts, so that's the B2 and the B3, as well as the green zone. They also want to do that to better capitalize on the social equity component of the business licensing, which I'll get into in just a moment. The Planning Department is obviously seeking your input on the preference of these two scenarios as they're described in the ordinance text. Additionally, the amendment would introduce designated consumption establishments and the ability to hold special marijuana events. All designated consumption establishments would face the same zoning requirements regarding separation buffers, as well as additional standards. All marijuana events would be approved by city council on a case-by-case basis. The zoning amendment also includes stricter standards for odor control, particularly as it relates to growing and processing facilities, including provisions for odor control mitigation to minimize the impact on surrounding properties. The amendment clarifies how separation requirements between marijuana operations and sensitive uses by defining drug-free zones and making that consistent throughout all of the marijuana uses, which is a problem that's currently in the marijuana ordinance as it stands now. It also eliminates retail from B1, as that's generally districts within a very close proximity to residential uses, and it maintains the 500-foot buffer that the city has established for drug-free zones. So the state only requires 300 feet, but we've maintained that 500 feet separation from the drug-free zones. The marijuana business licensing revision has been amended to include social equity components based on the state of Michigan standards. These standards focus on four options to achieve the required social equity, so an applicant could live in a community that has been disproportionately impacted by marijuana prohibition and enforcement, or provide evidence of a marijuana conviction or offense, or registered, be registered as a primary caregiver under the Medical Marijuana Act back upon its original inception, or it can be a gold star, they could be a gold star participant of the state's social equity all-star program. And that would be something that the council would have input on with that gold star equity, so there would be some give back to the community in the form of some sort of community benefit. The amendment also creates a strict timeline for the entire application process to ensure that applicants move their projects forward in a timely manner. It includes clear deadlines for each step of the process, from submitting the application to receiving a license, to reduce ambiguity and ensure that there is no race to the finish in the future. The changes are designed to promote fairness and efficiency in the business licensing process, while hopefully protecting public health and safety. Thank you.
Okay, stay right there. Let's get started. Councilwoman Watley, questions?
Okay.
Go ahead.
I'm to be first. You have revamped, now we just passed this marijuana ordinance in 2020, September of 2020, and you have revamped it to add things that were taken out from that. Who the, who gave you this information? I mean, you didn't just arbitrarily decide to put this stuff back in that we had already taken out. So where did this information come from?
Yeah, I can only speak to, since my time with the city, my knowledge of that background is limited. And as I mentioned, we worked with the administration and the Planning Commission to draft this new language that I think you're, you know, proposing, the green zone and designated consumption and the special events.
But the green zone is something totally new. The consumption and the event was taken out of the original marijuana process. So what has happened in the last three months that makes this a viable situation again? I mean, the last three years, or two years?
I'm not familiar with the background. That occurred in 2020, so I can't speak to that.
Now, I'm not asking you to speak to that. I'm just saying, you put this in there now. It had to come from somewhere. It didn't just fall out the sky on this piece of paper.
As I've mentioned, I worked, we worked with the administration and the Planning Commission. So that's, you know, was where the working sessions and the input came.
The administration and the Planning Commission suggested putting this back in?
Yes.
Okay, all right. Now, the second thing is, the purpose, each one of these sections starts out with, well, just getting back to that right quick. Just so you know, in Section 124.05, it says designated consumption centers of the current ordinance, designated consumption centers and event licenses as defined by the department are strictly prohibited. So now they're back in if this is passed, correct. Okay, where consumption centers are concerned, it seems to me that there's no, no regulation involved in this, because consumption centers are places where you just go smoke your dope, right?
Yep.
That's, that's basically what a consumption center is. It's, you know, I call that your home. That's where you need to go. But this is someplace where taxpayers are paying, so you can go in and smoke. Where is the regulation in this ordinance that deals with you, because you can't buy the dope there. You can't buy food there. All you do is go in and smoke it. It's tantamount to the old frock houses they used to have. So where is the regulatory portion of this? Because you don't really know what these people are bringing in there. If they bring in their own marijuana, it can be laced with anything.
So the state does have regulation regarding designated consumption establishments, and in order to ensure that these establishments maintain their license, they would need to follow that. I can't speak to all of the specifics of the consumption establishment at the state level regulation, but there is licensing requirements that they would not want to infringe upon to be able to keep their license.
It is, there's nothing in this, in this ordinance that shows who does what to who. You know what I mean? Like I said, he could, he could lace it with anything, you know? Or they could bring anything in there. Who is the regulatory person that makes sure what they're bringing in is okay? You're not just leaving it up to the owner, right?
I believe it is on the owner, but again, I, I can't say with 100% certainty as it relates to the state requirements for the licensing. That's, I mean, if we're making similar arguments about bars, if people bring in something and lace people's drinks, it is on the owner of the bar to kind of maintain the safety of their supply.
That's, that's not apples and apples, okay? And I'm not, I'm not trying to be difficult. I'm just making a point, because everybody in this room knows I'm, I'm totally against this, okay? So I'm just trying to point out to my colleagues and other people that there's a lot more that needs to go into this before we actually approve something of this nature, okay? The, the second thing is, when you were talking about bars and stuff like that, a person cannot drink. How do you not inhale in this place?
The, it's a designated consumption establishment, so the patrons who are going there understand what is going on. It's going, is, you have hookah lounges, you have cigar bars. If you don't want to elect to inhale.
Marijuana in a hookah bar.
I, I'm not suggesting that. I'm just suggesting that if you don't want to inhale those substances, you don't go into a cigar bar.
How do you hold your breath for three and a half hours while everybody else around you is smoking?
You don't go in it.
No, but I'm saying, suppose you went there with someone, with, you know, you were the designated driver. You got people coming out of there.
Councilwoman, can I say this? This is all through planning. So the Planning Commission actually had a public hearing. All of these things were presented.
Nobody attended.
Well, councilwoman, it's not about nobody didn't know, because people knew. So they just didn't come. So, and you were on the meeting. So let me just say this, though. Let me, let me say this, is that it doesn't have to be that way. It's just, if you want to remove it, just say we want to remove it.
We're gonna remove a lot of this.
Well, just say that. Let's, let's move it forward.
Oh, we can't, you don't want to talk about it?
You can talk about it, but I'm just saying, you, you're, you're grilling, you know, the planner.
No, I'm not grilling. I'm asking questions.
As it relates to the state regulations, this is the state regulating this. This is not...
We are responsible for what we do at this level.
Yes, and you can just say we want to remove it.
Okay, let's take out, we took it out once. Somebody put it back in here. Remember? I just read to you where we took this out already, and it came back.
Yes.
So apparently, what, what, you know, is happening is not of our liking, okay? But I will move on, since it seems to create a situation. Also, in the first sentence of this, it always says, "to serve and protect the health, safety, and welfare of the general public." Now, all of these things you've mentioned don't seem to fit that criteria, because we already have, what is it, six, seven, eight, nine? In this consumption, this green zone that they're talking...
Nine what?
Huh?
Nine what? You said we have nine. I'm just trying to figure out what you said nine what.
No, I'm, we already have a great deal of, we, we passed six dispensaries. There were already three in operation.
Right, so you only have three that's operating.
Huh?
You only have three that's operating.
That's, that's, that's giving a false narrative.
What's three that's operating?
Two gonna have this many, and you're getting ready to make it so they don't have to have buffers anymore. The only reason we have the small amount we do have is because of the buffers, right? But the green zone says no buffers at all.
So...
So you can put any amount you want in there. They can be side by side. They can be on top of each other. I just want to know from the public and my colleagues, how many of us need, think we need some more marijuana?
Yeah, I don't think we need anymore. Let me just say this. So, so, so we're on the same page. As it relates to the ordinance itself, and I think we all missed this, and even the attorney sitting here today, as it relates to the buffers, when we were putting the buffers in, we looked at the map, and we said, "It can't be here. You can only have one here." But in the fine print, and this is something that even I myself, I overlooked, in the fine print, it didn't say when you put an application in, how the application process would go. That's why those people were able to put their application in. So you had an additional five, four, four dispensaries that's looking to go into one area, which is at Middlebelt Michigan Avenue. Because of that language, as it relates to the application being accepted, we had to accept all of the applications. And attorney, please stop me if I'm, if I'm saying anything that's not right. So we had to accept those applications. So once we accepted those applications, we brought them before this body, and because we didn't have an actual, like, points saying, "Hey, listen, the first person that brings in that application, they have 24 months in order to open up the establishment. If it don't, then it goes to the next person." We had to accept all of them. And then we said it's a race to the finish.
Excuse me, I see you trying to...
It's not what I'm trying to do. We're talking factual. That's what we're talking about. Let's talk facts.
I'm talking about this ordinance right now.
You said it was nine dispensaries and it's not.
How does this ordinance impact what you're saying that makes this better for the city? How?
You, you have, you have two options. So that's what we're looking at right now. Or you have, you have three, actually. So let's say you have three. So you have, number one is to make it a green zone, and everybody in that area is open, and you don't have any race to the finish, right? You have number two, where you say, "Okay, they can be in this area, plus the ones that are existing now are in their existing spaces," right? And nobody else can come into that area as well, but they're in their existing spaces. Or you have three, you do nothing, and you leave it the way that it is right now, today. Or, or you say, or you say, or you say that, "Let's just add a thousand-foot barrier all around it and, and just be done with it."
No.
So that's what, that's, yeah, and then you go, then you go from there.
What I'm trying to ascertain here is because there should be no more, period.
Okay, I agree.
We have, we have gone the gambit where this is concerned, okay? I think what we should do at this point is cap it, you know? We should cap it at three, the way it was supposed to be initially.
Okay, hold on one second. David, can you please speak to that? Just so as it relates to when we were capping it, why we didn't outcap it and all...
If he's gonna tell us, if he's gonna tell us that we could get sued, because that was the boogeyman inference, you know? If we cap it, they'll sue us. Well, everybody sues for everything. What you have to do is make sure you have adequate legal representation where you can repel those lawsuits, okay?
I hear you.
Isn't that what, isn't that what it's supposed to be? I mean, correct me if I'm wrong, all right? So we were told...
So you don't want to hear from the attorney?
No, I don't want to hear from David. I've heard from David before.
Okay.
Where this is concerned, but if you, if the rest of the...
But you were just wondering why we did what we did.
If the rest of the people want to hear, you know, this...
I'd like to hear what the attorney got to say.
I want to hear from David to see what's going on.
I'd like to hear what the attorney got to say.
Go ahead.
Yeah, um, we want to...
You asked me if I wanted to.
David, please. Just clarity, please.
Well, the fact that when the city first instituted the three dispensaries, we did have a limit, and we did have a mechanism for whose applications to accept first. There was a lottery, so to speak, but it's no secret to this body that with the limit of three dispensaries, the city faced several lawsuits. And, you know, despite all the rhetoric I'm hearing from Ms. Watley, we did dismiss of several of them in, in pretty short order. The long and short of it is, you know, when you have something that's in such a high demand, people can sue, you know, it, all it costs is $200 to go file a summons and complaint and file a lawsuit. We can't stop them from suing. And, and no ordinance, no recommendation is bulletproof. The, the best you can do is, city years ago, another administration opted in to the marijuana, you deal with it best you can see fit. But you're not going to be able to stop anybody from suing.
Okay, okay. Councilwoman Watley, you still have a floor.
Yeah, okay. I'll just wait and see.
Yes, ma'am.
All right, the, also...
Go ahead.
In this, this ordinance that you're talking about, a green zone, those marijuana...
Order.
Those marijuana places that are outside the green zone, you can't make them leave or go into there. So they'd still be where they are now with the thousand-foot buffers, correct?
Correct.
Okay, so this green zone, in essence, would add more than we have. I mean, we're six square miles.
Yeah.
And to have this many marijuana facilities in here, I mean, Westland is three times our size, and they only have three. And one of those is a micro business, you know? So we would end up with, I'm sorry, I should be directing my stuff to you, right? Okay, so, and it's not like we're gonna get any type of extra money out of these, you know what I'm saying?
Wait, I mean, you would. I mean, if we're talking straight, let's talk straight.
I am talking straight.
You definitely gonna get, you gonna get money out of it.
There are, we get, the only reason we opted in to recreational was so, because they stopped giving the excise tax on medical.
Right.
And we had, we said we were gonna pair the medical with the recreational, and that way they would still only be three. But that's not what happened. But even with this, the more marijuana establishments that opens, the lower that money you get from the state. So, because if one, if you have a $10 pot in Lansing of excise money, and you have two, then each of them get $5. But if another one comes on, they get $333. And if another one comes on, they get $250. I mean, the more you have open, there's a reduction in the money that comes from the state.
You can fight that one all day. I'm, I'm, listen, I'm just trying to govern the meeting. I don't, I don't have, I don't have a dog in the fight at the same time, but I'm saying to you, is, is I'm with you. I hear you.
And it would be different if these people who come in here...
Okay.
Were going to reinvest the money that they make back in Inkster, but they don't. They take that back to their community.
I, I can't, I can't speak to that. I can't say that.
I, I will add, I guess there's, maybe not a direct question there, but that was something that the Planning Commission discussed, was how do we get more social equity from these proprietors? And that's what is addressed in that Chapter 124 revision. And through conversation with the Planning Commission, you know, the argument was made that, well, if we don't allow for other businesses, we won't see the social equity and the reinvestment in this community. So that was one of the reasons they opted for recommendation of the green zone, because they felt that, well, if we're going to have more proprietors, then let's at least allow for the social equity to actually, to come back into the community. So I, I want to pass that along as that was part of our discussion.
When you say other businesses, are you referring to other businesses than the marijuana trade? You mean like grocers and things of that nature?
It would be marijuana businesses, because that's the nature of the Chapter 124.
So they would allow for more of that. Okay, so you said that we should just say what we don't want and move on?
Not necessarily say and just move on. I just don't want you necessarily back, you know? Like, I mean, she's trying. She's here. She's a professional. We want to be respectful.
Okay, well, as you talk about the equity piece too, is our equity piece still the same, where 51% has to belong to the local person?
So, and, and I would just say that, as we talked about that, right, we were trying to make it to where the local person would actually have more percentage, right, or more ownership. But as you looked at that model and what the state is doing, the state requires 15% to then in turn allow the investment to be what it is, right? So for, for us, you know, we can say that. We can do what we want to do. It's, it's our body. It's up to us to do that.
That was one of the problems before, because no one is gonna come into your city and put that kind of money in here, and then only have a 49%.
I agree.
So it didn't seem realistic to the beginning, in the beginning, as that aspect of this marijuana ordinance changed.
No.
It's still the 51% of the local.
As it relates to, as it relates to micro businesses.
Yes.
Correct.
Yes, well, that, micro businesses is the only equity party, isn't it?
No.
This, this ordinance revision would introduce the Gold Star Equity. So that's a state-run program through the CRA. And if you aren't, if you don't hit one of those other three, which is being a member of the, I think it's 151 disenfranchised communities, having a marijuana conviction, or being a medical marijuana caregiver at the time that that act was put in place, then you have to have a Gold Star-level social equity plan. The social equity plan is out, you know, the requirements are outlined in that ordinance, but the state also governs that in what they want to see. So that's, you know, where you get a community benefit to, potentially. They, they propose something. We don't demand something specific of them, but it's something that the council would be signing off on. So they would need to propose that publicly to this body, and that would be part of their approval. That's how we would be getting that community benefit.
Okay, my, my point where that's concerned is, this is a very expensive proposition to get into, which is why a lot of people here don't get into it. I mean, the first license, I mean, just to talk to us is $5,000.
Ten.
Then it go, "Oh, it's 10 now?" Okay, well, I've been at this a while. And then the next portion is anywhere from 10 to $60,000 to go to the next level. And no one has that type of money, especially the people you're talking about who have, what you say, convictions or whatever, or just local people. Nobody has $60,000 to put into that. So that equity piece seems sort of disingenuous.
Well, that, that's the reason why the Gold Star Equity Program is required. So I understand that getting funding is difficult. We can't govern for that. We are not a bank. We're not here to provide local funding. The people who are coming in and are willing to make that investment, the idea is to apply this Gold Star Social Equity Plan, and they would have to propose some sort of benefit to the community with that plan. So yes, I get that it's not necessarily targeting, enabling local folks or people who fall into those other three categories, although it does open up an easier channel, because they don't have to then create this equity plan. But it does require more investment from the proprietors who would be able to actually make that, that higher level of investment.
Okay, another thing, another thing we look at is the drain on our resources when this stuff happens, because it takes, I mean, anytime you move into a community, if you use it just once, that's once we had to use it, where if you hadn't been here, we wouldn't. So how does this impact our police now?
So, just to the chief.
Well, I think that what we have at this point has not really created significant changes for us. Well, I think that, uh, what we have at this point has not really created significant changes for us. Uh, a- as far as police reports and police response. So I'm not sure, to, to say that it would not affect it would probably not be the case, but to say that it would affect it seriously is not the case either. We've not had a significant rise in crime in areas that have these dispensaries. We have three in operation at this point, so that's pretty minimal, uh, three locations, so. Uh, but to add the additional ones, I'm, I'm, who, you know, I'm not a fortune teller and neither are you, so I guess the, the, the answer is gonna be, you know, if in fact it's passed and they open up, we will be able to see, but at this point, I can't forecast or say that there's gonna be a significant change in, in.
If they add six more, it's gonna be, well, you're right, you're not mind beaters. But still, it's going to be a drain on our resources as well as the fire and all those other things. The other thing is the odor portion. You said there were significant, uh, uh, advancements in maintaining or e- ameliorating that particular thing too?
The, so the ordinance now has, did not have specific requirements as it related to odor control. It now has, you know, certain fans, it requires you to go through the Eagle, um, the requirements that they've outlined in terms of odor control, and then with all of the retailers, they have to have a double air locking entry system so that, you know, you go in one door, you go, then go in the second door, in hopes that that also, uh, reduces the odor that escapes. Nothing is going to be perfect. I agree that the odor is, um, you know, one of the major issues that we recognize with marijuana cultivation, any of the uses, but this is in hopes of adding something more strict that the ordinance prior did not speak to, and it's something that when we would go through and review it, we felt like was a gap in the ordinance, so that's why we added the language about very specific types of ventilation and odor control.
Okay, is there any measurement by which you, there, that's out there that tells you when you've reached the level of odor that is harmful to the people in the area?
I'm, I'm not aware of a, like, specific measurement as there is like a light or sound measurement, but Eagle does have strict requirements on just parts per million in terms of their ventilation system. So, I think that's how they're measuring it, but not going out and measuring five hundred feet from the building or anything of that nature.
Yeah, but, uh, two, just to, and I know you were at the state of the, the county address as Executive Evans was talking about, you know, pollution and odor control, that's gonna be part of that as well. So we're looking at seeing how, you know, the city, of course, I'm sorry, that the city, of course, could, you know, become part of the county's program because we're in the county, of course, but specifically for marijuana because we do one thing that we haven't really addressed is the fact that we have all of these cultivating centers on, you know, pretty much like up, abuts to our residents. So that's why you had these, you know, amassed.
How many cultivation centers do we have right now?
Currently, you have six cultivating centers in the city, in the city of Inkster.
No, we have two.
Oh, you got six, and then, uh.
You're talking about the grow.
Yeah, the growing, cultivating and processing, yeah. You got one next door to city hall?
M one is not big enough to have six.
Well, you, you building one right on Duney right now, in the neighborhood. It's like ridiculous. And it got rezoned today, so, but, but then you're talking about people able to grow marijuana in their backyards.
Yeah, anybody can grow twenty-four plants, so. We don't need these other dispensaries anyway. You, you could grow your own, but I'm going to let someone else speak now.
Okay, and know that this is, this is the first public hearing, right? So, next time we come around, we'll be able to discuss before we vote anyway what the vote comes to. So this is not just the day end all. We need to talk and say what we want, don't want over the next couple of weeks. If there's something that comes to mind, take it out, put it in, whatever. It's, that's what we're doing. Go ahead, Councilwoman Washington.
Um, so I have a few questions. First one, if you could explain how this lottery pr- uh, process work with the applicants? And then, two, with the lottery process, what does that look like with litigation? You know, with the process of litigation, if we opt into this, now there's a lottery process.
Yes, I can speak to that. So, the la- I, and I've, uh, discussed this with the clerk as well, but the lottery that you're speaking of is, would be, uh, highly unlikely. We put it in there as a kind of stopgap, so it would be if someone came in the same day and applied for a license at the same address, there would be a lottery, a public lottery that would occur. Now, the likelihood of someone coming in, two different parties coming in and applying for the same address is in the clerk and I's kind of opinion after reviewing this, so unlikely that it probably can be removed from the text, but it was there as a guarantee of since we've outlined this whole process with all of these timelines, just in case what happens if two people come in with interest in the same property and apply at the same time, how do we decide who gets to start the process? Um, I'll let David speak to the, the legal action, but it's not a general lottery for who gets to apply. It would only be in that sp- very specific scenario.
Okay, and then, um, also, based off the buffers that's in the text, how many can actually fit in that area if the green zone is passed?
Well, it would technically be, you know, however many structures or parcels, so, but then you also have to.
What's the, I guess, the minimum or the maximum, that's the maximum amount that could actually go there?
Let me, uh, I can look at this parcel map, but there's also market conditions in terms of, you know, the U-Haul is unlikely to go out of business and become a dispensary. Now, I can't say, again, we're not fortune tellers, can't say that for certain, but you have to recognize those, those market conditions. So I believe there's there's probably fifteen parcels in that Henry Rough to Middle Belt. Now, I'm only looking at the parcel map, so some of those may be combined with a single structure on them. I, I'm not looking at the physical aerial to tell you that. I'm just p- purely referencing the amount of parcels that are in that Henry Rough to Middle Belt area.
Oh, so, okay, so you can't pretty much answer my question for that? So he said.
Well, she could, she.
Fifteen parcels.
Yeah, she, so she could. Yeah, so, so let's just look at it this way. You have on between Middle Belt and Henry Rough, right? On the south side of the street, you got the gas station on the corner. And then next to it, you got a big piece of property that's in the front there that a possible person could actually build something on. It's in front of the siding wall, right? And then you have the DTE piece that's there. And then you had a flight club. The next building over is the furniture store, so that possibly could be one, right? Right next to it, that's, so that's one. So right next to it, you got Howard's Cars, that's the, the one that we approved, so that's one. And then you have the Blue House, which owns pretty much all that land, you approve that, so that's three. And then you have the micro business, this Stone Collision, that's right there, that's four, right? And then on the last is Dan's Glass, but it's like a house that's like right there, so I don't know exactly if that could possibly be, but yeah, possibly could be there. Now, let's come back across to the, the north side, so Henry Rough, on that big parcel. That's sitting there. People's, some people say it used to be a junkyard, I don't know, but I know it's like land conditions and all that stuff, they would probably be having to go into there. It's a big billboard that sits there now, right? So that could possibly be one. And then you have Bogars. I don't see them going nowhere. Next to there, you have the golf range. Now, the golf range is already committed and they're going through a process to where they're trying to make that into an outdoor event space for their particular reasons, right? So they own it, they said they're not trying to do anything with it as it relates to marijuana, but that possibly could be one, right?
If U-Haul decided they wanted to leave and, um, if they wanted to, just worst case scenario, then.
So you got one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight possibilities, cuz you just built the new gas station. So in that area, you could possibly have eight in that area.
Okay, so you have eight in that area, and then with the cultivations, that's not even included in this, the cultivation can still go.
The cultivations are only in M one.
M one.
Right, and they're unlimited.
Right. And then, so, um, in regards.
Which, we could revisit that, that's up to this body, so, again, laws are meant to be, you know, that's what we're here, and we're here to hear from the people and see what they wanna have. Because you could still, in the M one, possibly, you could probably get another down Cherry Street. Probably about another seven cultivating centers. Easily down Cherry Street. Go ahead.
Can I just add that the cultivation, uh, market though, we've already seen, uh, one cultivation center that's not been able to renew, so the cultivation market, just looking at from economic perspective, there is a natural cap that is occurring on that.
So even if they not able to renew, a new business owner can't come in here and do that, or, I mean, the building is there.
Right.
Okay, and then, um, in regards to how the applicants put in their applications and then being in the green zone, um, what happens? If, I guess what happens if we don't approve this, that's the question, what happens if we don't? I mean, we did say that's the possibility of, cuz I'm seeing buildings, you know, over there now, so what happens then? You know, the city, we get sued by all of them, or how's that work?
I'll divert to the city attorney.
Anybody can file a lawsuit with the filing of a filing fee. If you can't prevent from somebody from doing with a piece of property that they're lawfully allowed to use, if it's illegal use, if the city has an ordinance that permits it, they have a right to have it. You know, if the city votes contrary, they don't have a right to, to do. You can't legislate someone's use of the property.
But Mr. Mayor, isn't that what this race to the finish is all about? Whoever finishes first and is within that thousand foot buffer, that other person is out of there.
I totally agree, one hundred percent. A- a- at the same time, again, we should have had that before. It shouldn't be a race to the finish.
Hindsight is twenty-twenty.
Yeah, yeah, for sure, but at the same time, we shouldn't be, we should try to be proactive.
This is all new, so everybody, because didn't you help with the very first?
Yes, in two thousand fourteen.
Yeah, way back then, that was part of you, so you were not able to foresee all of the things that would come out of this. I know more about marijuana than I ever wanted to know at this point. I, so I'm saying that you, you say what we should have done, but what we need to do now is make sure we don't have to kick this can down the road where the next council or the next council, the next council has to do it. It's something that's concrete, that you can look at and say, no.
That's what we're trying to do.
Okay, let's do it.
That's why we're talking in between, and that's why we're having conversations.
No, thought process.
Go ahead.
Is there a way to actually make the buffers more bigger?
So, you could, you, 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 you could, and again, I'm back to what David said.
Two thousand.
Anybody can sue you.
I mean, that's fine.
You can say two thousand, yep.
I'm just saying, but that'll cut down the number that you just stated, because that's now in law that we actually have the ordinance, two thousand, you know. For footage.
Yeah.
It sound like the buffer is really the biggest concern right now, cuz that makes more places. So how do we? Make it bigger?
From a planning perspective, you would be creating, uh, legal non-conformities, which is something we typically try to avoid, so you would have something that was legal at one point and then you've now made it illegal. Just for a point of reference, with the current buffers, minus the green zone, let's just forget about that for a minute, because either way, that's going to resolve itself one way or another, cuz you either have enough that they've buffered themselves out, or you have an open market there. But let's, let's forget about that for a moment. My calculations, you only really have s- three more viable locations for retailers in the city if you maintain your thousand foot and five hundred foot drug-free buffer. So, Inkster Road, most of that's not viable because of the churches that are located in that area. Uh, same with Beach Daily. Childcare chi- uh, churches, you have about one ma- or two more that are on Michigan Avenue. Now, that's with consideration that you'd have to take out a gas station at the corner of Beach Daily and Michigan, and you would most likely need to have the mobile home park as part of your property. So, I'm just speaking from strictly a, like, looking at the land perspective, not at the current uses, but I think it probably is pretty unlikely that that gas station is going out, and I don't think that someone's gonna come in to redevelop that mobile home park and put in marijuana. Now, I can't say that's not gonna happen. There's one area at the corner of Cherry Hill, um, and Henry Rough that you potentially could see something, but I, looking at these buffers, I'm just letting you know.
Let me, let me step in and correct you though. You couldn't at Cherry Hill because of the school.
Okay, thank you, yes, yeah.
And then you couldn't at Harrison, I'm assuming that you're talking about Michigan Avenue, because of the current, you got the current, uh, dispensary that's there, which is the Flower Bowl, plus you got the Library, that's like right.
Right, in between those, you would have to be in that middle of the mobile home park, which is why I'm saying. Why I'm saying that's, that's unlikely.
So, who came up with the thousand foot buffers? Was it, uh, was it, who came up with that thousand foot buffer? Because I, I mean, I'm just trying to make sense of it. If you're, like, at any time, we can edit, take out.
It was the past, but I think that it, it came from the, the recommendation of the state at the time. You know, saying that, you know, cities could do a thousand feet, and that was just a thing all the cities were doing.
So they can, but they cannot do more?
Well, you can.
Okay.
You just, I mean, basically off of what the planner just said, because you did a thousand, if you go up to two, say, two thousand.
You can't predict that those businesses are gonna be there or sell them and wanna give a marijuana business.
Of course.
So that's predictions, that's just thought, you know? Just a thought in mind to, you know, for co- the co- I mean, my colleagues and we gotta do something with this, so, you know, even if we added it and add two thousand feet, cuz I mean, the residents themselves is more afraid of how many, so we open up the buffers and make it more buffers, then we'll have less. You know what I mean? And we still can honor the green zone in a sense, but have more of a higher buffer. So there'll be less, instead of the amount you just gave, you get what I'm saying?
Yeah, I understood what you're saying. But that's why we're talking and discussing, and then we're gonna hear from the public too, so. You have anything else?
Oh, I'm done.
Okay, I'm just going down the line. Councilman Shaw, did you have anything?
No, I, I wanna wait to the public.
Okay.
I have a couple of questions. Um, who owns that land off of Michigan Avenue and Henry Rough?
Which one? Michigan and Henry Rough, on the?
On the side where the, um, the furniture store, the furniture store on that side.
So, at the furniture store?
Yeah, I mean, and back towards, uh.
And back of it?
Yeah, yeah.
Oh, oh, you, oh, you know, you're talking about down on Henry Rough? And it's where they're building the cultivating centers now. That's Abe Hatchin.
Okay, okay.
Midwest Recycling and the Flower Bowl.
And, and, um, I know a lot of people have been talking about this, we did this, we did this, it's so confusing, um. But I, in my opinion, I think the buffers should stay as they are. Um, I got a, I kept a news clipping from July and it's saying Michigan Pot Shop sees profits goes up in smoke. So, if you saturate a city, the people who have the business, they don't have to make the money that they thought they was gonna make. Um, they already saying that the marijuana is not, the flower is not uh, worth what it used to be. So, we already have three up, right? So how do we honor those three? Because if you saturate it, it's, it's, it's gonna be a mess. I mean, saturate a community with anything is gonna be a mess. Somebody's not gonna make it. And then we have these buildings, uh, that's sitting up that's vacant.
Well, I ain't gonna, you know, just for me, as a business person, they build the buildings, I'm getting taxes.
If the person move out of that and just let it go or whatever, we're not gonna get it. We're just gonna be sitting up here like, like Walmarts, when, you know, Walmarts leave, you got this big building, Kroger's.
Yeah, for sure.
So, that's my opinion. The more saturation that we have, is they're not gonna make money. So I'm thinking that me, I've been opting out for a long time, and I opted in the original, but for the three that's there, I think we should honor them, because they're here. They, that's all we need. And, I mean, the rest have to just wait to the finish line. I don't think that we should saturate. Satur- saturate our city with that. Satur- saturate our city with that, because when I look out my window or go to Inkster Road, where am I gonna go eat? Where am I gonna go shop, that's what we need to be working on. I plan in department, I eat uh DDA, there's no reason, there's no reason why we don't have anything here. And I've been preaching that for a long time, and it's not you, honey, I'm not directing anything at you, I'm just directing it at administration. Past administration, this admini- we have to do better.
Yeah, but it's our people though.
We make it here, but we have to go out and solicit, we have to go have. Mike Dugan, whoever, come here and say, look, how did you get whatever you get going?
We're doing all of that.
But see, we we work on who we love, who we like, that's why we don't have nothing, to me. And I'm just like, it's 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 tiring, it's tiring, it really, really is. I mean, you know, we we go back and forth, it's just tiring, it's tiring, we need to do better up here. That's all I have to say.
Okay. Cheers, Councilor?
Yes. Yeah, well, kind of sort of, thank you, Mr. Chair, um, just from what I was gathering, and just in other conversations out and about uh. From the past and with the public and things of that nature, I was jotting down, as far as removing. Just my suggestions for designated consumption establishment, um, event organizer, temporary event, we uh remove those. Of course, we keep the buffers, uh, the thousand foot buffer, and we can also add, and you know, Attorney Jones can speak to this or whomever can. Uh, the cap's back in there, I know the caps are not on medical anymore, we never had a cap on recreational, and then we could have it where. Whichever one comes first, or whichever is the most strictest of the two, uh, I know sometimes the laws get funny like that, where it'd be. Uh, two laws for something, whichever one is the more strict is the one that gets abided by, like if the state has one thing, for instance, the thousand foot buffer example. That we follow, we could always lower ours, um, I know back then we talked about it, we could lower ours and have it more strict, cause theirs was just a reference, but. Like Mayor Pottin said, we set the laws and ordinances for our own community. Uh, and then additionally, yeah, remove those three licenses and. Okay, so that's that, and because I was always thinking too, even when we had talked about this, and I I think it might have been twenty twenty, cause we were on Zoom when we. That all got voted, um, I'm talking about the initial business license that changed. Um, with the car industry example, how there's an oversaturation of car lots everywhere. And then when the car industry took a a a downward trajectory, they all went vacant, so you go down like Ford Road and stuff, even in Garden City. And the Lincoln Mercury dealer is just vacant, you know, same thing with like the Sears outlet and all that too, um, I I look at it from that perspective of. You know, some folks say, yeah, we're getting this building and everything like that, it'll be new, it'll be furnished, but as. All these, say, for instance, come online, again, like you all said, some are gonna lose and get bought out, or they just go vacant, and even though we're still getting the taxes. We'll still be getting calls like we do right now about vacant buildings on Michigan Avenue and all throughout the community, and. So it's a different way we could go about this, but those are my suggestions for that, um, and then as far as the odor, I thought, and correct me if I'm wrong. And and I might have been somewhere at something where they were talking about, I don't know if it was with Eagle, or if it was with the M R A, Marijuana Regulatory Agency. Where I guess they were supposed to be imposing something, just like Eagle did with the water, you know? Both, oh, okay, I was gonna say, just like Eagle did with the water, where we were drinking water at seventeen parts per. Drinking water that had copper lead in it that was measured seventeen parts per billion, I believe, then they lowered the threshold for the entire state, and everybody went into a. A a a tizzy saying, we poisoning the citizens with the water, which wasn't the fact, the threshold got lowered. So I didn't know, um, the mayor just said that both agencies, I guess, are talking about how to measure that in the air, cause. I know we have residents here tonight, and they're talking about the odors that are coming from the cultivation centers, um, not just in Inkster, but. The surrounding communities as well, it's just a factor, matter of how close they are to residential, how far that air travel, so on and so forth. Um, so I think that is something we need to continue investigating, and I would hope, you know, adopt whatever the the state is. Imposing or has imposed in ours, um, and I wish it was a way we can go backwards, because. Well, the state can do whatever they wanna do, but I know we have to navigate correctly, because we have those who are here to say, hey, I'm grandfathered in, I don't have to abide by these guidelines. But due to the health and welfare of the community, yes, you do.
Yeah, you do, but but and to that point, Councilman, each year, and that's why we have to do a better job too, as relates to working with Laura. To be able to make sure that we're regulating and and going in and looking at what they're doing and all that before we relicense them. Because each year is a license process, each year they should be coming in and renewing their license with the city clerk. But before the city clerk give them a new license, we should be having PD going, the fire going, you know, working with the county. With this new system and making sure that everybody doing what they're supposed to do.
So I was gonna uh just say, even with the caps and or the buffers, I know. Like we talk about this race to the finish, we already have some in the pipeline that legally are pr- are processed, you know, we can't backtrack on those. But going forward, should that be something that's imposed into this, or however we do this, I think, um. I think, um, when we, if we set a number, that's what it was, if we set a number on the cap or something like that. I believe we should set it to make sure that we are accepting of the ones that are already in the pipeline, but going forward, it's just a a blanket law, like no, no. You know, no more, we're done, and this is where it's at, because we've gotta stop it somewhere, cause I mean, it's. Not necessarily all of us in this room is making this investment as people from outside of the community, and just like with. And I notice I'll go with this, but just like with the A S C homes, adult foster care homes. Inkster has so many vacant properties, people just come buy them up, and then they just throw patients in there, and they don't care for them in a capacity which they should. But when we called around to the surrounding communities, trying to find out how they stopped it, they told us they didn't, but because they don't have all these vacant houses. A lot of investors aren't coming in there, or I'm sorry, business owners aren't coming in there and putting an adult foster care home in that. Community, and so they're all coming to Inkster, and it's a disservice to our people, and people overall, when those people don't care for the patients that are there. But anyway, uh, back to this, those are my suggestions, and I can type this up and email it as well, um, to everybody, just so you all can have it, and I yield the floor.
Okay.
Kinda funny. I'm glad to hear you talking. Limitation, hey, is this time to put a cut in it? Okay, um. A lot of people wondering, why we got all these marijuana places and all like that, like that, well, we we had problems, uh. Things come up in the courthouse and different things like that, that we had to deal with, and and a lot of this stuff that we had. In 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 here, and then we had people saying, well, I want this and I don't want this, so it's not a bunch of confusion when you talk about Inkster. And it's right in marijuana, okay, but now where I fell off at, and and you haven't really answered, Ms. Dixon, I. I'm really trying to find out how did the clause get in there about the green zone? Okay, and all of it end up down in the green zone in my area, okay, I've been trying to figure out, how did it get in there? Okay, because the simple fact. You haven't answered, who brought, I I thought person from the. Person that sits on the.
Planning Commission?
Planning Commission. Had to recommend them, and council should have noted about them, so I'm just trying to figure out, I'm trying to figure out how did it get in there, and then. Cause in back in October, when they talk about that, and a lot of us disagree, cause I think, uh. Uh, Ms. Washington brought it up, uh, uh, a- about the green zone, and we talked about that, and then I said, well, you know, I don't want them in. In my area, and then we we talked about some of the people who's gonna have marijuana's uh dispensaries. Okay, so when I seen that they 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 wouldn't violate no law, they was gonna get in there. Uh, I went to the mayor, and I said, well, Mr. Mayor, if they got, if they gonna get in here, they might as well put up some hamburger places or or other clothing store. Add it on to that, okay, remember the conversation that we had?
Well, they actually came before the council. They came before the council and presented all of that.
After you went, after you talked with them, they come back and they wanted to add it, because that's what they were intentionally doing, okay? Now, but my question is. Long time in October, if I'm wrong, correct me, we talked about green zone, green zone areas and stuff like that. And all of a sudden, I come to tonight, when I pull the package, I see it all into the the planning. Okay, now, my my question would be, how did it get back in there?
Okay. You wanna take this and I can.
Yeah, uh, so this is the first of official discussion of the green zone at city council. I don't know exactly what the reference from October, maybe it was perhaps when the special land uses were being discussed, but. This is the first actual official discussion at city council, planning commission discussed this and recommended this to your body. Because upon our kind of investigation, you have four overlapping marijuana retailers right now that fall within. A thousand feet of each other, those are all special land uses that city council has already approved, so as a way to rectify that. And prevent any further action against the city, this is one way to accomplish that. In addition, the master plan kind of outlines that area as a potential entertainment district, so it's kind of logically flowed. That marijuana businesses and other types of, you know, entertainment be uh. Incorporated in maybe this zone, so really, it's coming from trying to rectify this kind of overlap, as well as. That's the master plan justification, is we were looking at this as an extension of that thought of an entertainment district.
Yeah, but just to add to that, Councilman, back to how they got into your area. Remember when I was 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 talking about earlier that in our ordinance, our current or ordinance. We don't have a clause that says an application, so here's how you take the application in through the clerk. And that application then in turn has a twenty-four month window, like two years in order to get their establishment up or something like that. That doesn't exist in this current ordinance, so we don't regulate how, you know, the actual application comes in. That's an area that has a potential for a retail space, so down on between Henry Rough and Middle Belt. You have, you know, the couple of entertainment spots that's there already, and there was just wide open, cause we had discussed here at this meeting. That it was only one potential one that could possibly even go in the city even again with the thousand foot barriers, and it was in that area. But because we didn't have, um, you know, in the application process, we had to take every application that came in. And that's why you got the race to the finish, so in that area, those four applicants are, every day, they're working to try to get their space up. So they can hand their stuff in back to the uh, the building department, where Mr. Don is thorough, so he's getting to go through and. Do what he needs to do, and then from there, it would go to the state, and then the state would have to, I mean, I'm sorry, to the clerk, the clerk would have to get him at a station sheet. That would then in turn go to the state, and then the state would actually have to approve them, and once they're approved, then they're allowed to open. But what happens if they're all approved at the same time from the state? That's the conundrum that we're dealing with right now, because again, in hindsight, as we're going through this process. We didn't think about that, it it just wasn't thought of, it was like, okay, put the buffers in, these are all the ones that you can have, this whole area was wide open, it was a whole mile that was wide open. And that's what basically will, that's why they're all in your area. On Michigan Avenue, cause it was only supposed to be one that was allowed to go there. Mayor, can I? Now you got one trying to get there, go ahead.
In the city of Hamtramck, they opted in, they had two uh dispensaries. Council had a big referen- a big referendum, the public didn't like it, they they wanted to limit it. It was denied, and then the council changed it and passed, they decided, okay, no more. Uh, prior to them saying no more, a person owned a piece of property, this is in litigation now, you can look it up, a person owned a piece of property. He was approved until February twelfth, when the city said no more, that person filed a lawsuit in. U S District Court, it's in federal court right now, uh, the judge has not ruled on the case yet, but has indicated that she believes. You know, because the that use was permitted at the time, this person owned the property and applied for those permits, they should be allowed to operate. It's cost the city right now in litigation, hundreds of thousands, I think there's six figures right now, litigating now, the law says the city has the right to limit it. But this person had applied before the city changed his mind, so it's in litigation right now, that's the natural case in federal court. It's actually two marijuana entities suing City of Hamtramck for the exact circumstance that we're talking about.
Go ahead, Mayor.
Okay, so, um, can I?
I know you had the floor, you still had the floor, she just had a question.
Okay, so, in that being said, those four that's in the pipeline now. They knew our ordinance, they knew we had a hundred thou- a thousand dollar, a thousand feet buffer, they knew that, so. Wouldn't you say that in that situation, they knew what our ordinance was at the time?
Are you referring to an Inkster case?
Correct, yes.
Which which case?
Because she had just mentioned that we had four in the pipeline, and we may not be able to service those. So wouldn't that apply, they knew what our buffers were when they applied?
Yeah, it it they also, I would say they do it at their own risk.
Right, okay, thank you, that's all I wanna say.
That's what we said, we made it clear.
And I still, I'm I'm, I'm still hearing what she's saying, what he, what he's saying, now, the Hamtramck case. They had already put in for it, they'd already applied the application, everything in there, okay, okay, we know we got the the race to the finish, I I think. We need to go on record, uh, no more. Okay, now, I know some might disagree with that, but it should be no more, okay?
I think everybody agree with that.
Say what?
Everybody agree with that.
You do?
We don't want any more, I I'm just saying, I gotta put my two cents in, we don't need anymore. It's just what it is, but we need to regulate what we have, and then we need to be proactive in our thinking on how we regulate things.
But I I see, I hear what you're saying. What I'm saying is, if 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 we start off, start off, I mean, I mean, it's other regulations that we can put in. Also, whatever the council feels like, but I think what we need to do is say, hey, no more, you know, deal with the the race to the finish. Okay, and then we, no more, because if we if we keep on, just like I said, if we keep on, and loophole, another loophole gonna open up. And I won't get into how this loophole opened up, it's just gonna continue to have us dealing with marijuana.
That's what their buffers are for. That we have right now, that would limit a lot of those people from coming in there.
But I'm just saying, I I am what you're saying, if you wanna put that in there, that's fine.
It's already in there, that's what I'm saying.
Let me ask you a question, David, could you put the thousand foot buffers and caps? I don't know why we never did.
That's what I was saying a few months ago.
That's what you're doing, I mean.
What what, you said, you put a cap to it?
Well, I heard you say, I didn't hear you say thousand feet, I'm sorry, I didn't mean to steal.
Yeah, I was saying, put the cap in, um, I said, keep thousand foot buffer and have it worded where it's whichever comes first or the stricter of the two.
That 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 sounds good. That eliminates all that, you know?
That's why we're here talking, you know, that's why.
Cause there's a lot of more things other than marijuana can be brought into Inkster, you know, a whole lot, you know?
Let let let's let's say this, I I I hear everybody say that, and 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 I love Inkster. And I I've put a lot of things in Inkster as it relates to business, and I've been doing business in Inkster, but the people have to stand up. And work together, that's the issue, and then you have to support those businesses that are here. It's business people right now in this community, and let me just say Clayton's Kitchen, you go in there right now, you could throw a rock in there. Cause we don't support our own, so when we talk about building our community. I'm forty, I'm forty-nine, I just turned forty-nine last week. Okay, and and let me say this, I I I I I hear all the stories and I reminisce about Harrison all the time with people. Reminisce all the time, all the black owned businesses, all that great stuff, but it's a lot of vacancies in the city where those people have left the city. And they own those properties, and we haven't had a plan of action, that's what you, that's what we have to do, family. We we can say the master plan is the master plan, but we have to have a plan of action, and then we have to have a call to action, we have to be willing as a people. Then in turn, as we're saying, we want this, we want that, nobody's coming to save us, we have to create it ourselves, then we have to support it. So we can all say, we can all disagree, don't like, whatever, but that's what's the, that's the facts, it's as simple as that. So I'm I'm like, hey, you know, all the time I'm asking, I look around this room right now, and I'm pretty much talking to everybody in here. About business, and about. And I'm pretty much talking to everybody in here about business and about doing something in the city and bringing something in this city. So I'm saying put up, huh, you know the rest, but let, let's, let's get to work, you know, really get to work though. And then you worry about other people coming in, you say, oh, well, other people are coming in and they're buying everything and they're doing all this, but it's like, well, what are you doing? What are you doing? And are you holding those people accountable that you know that own those properties? You know people that's doing business in our city right now, there's your family, your friends, that ain't doing what they supposed to do. So that's the reality, so let's, let's talk about, Inksster's a great place and it's surrounded by a whole lot of wonderful things. But what are we doing as it relates to action? We can talk all day, we can say Inksster, and we can get Inksster, we do this, we do that, but people don't wanna come to Inksster, number one, because. It ain't even that, that we haven't nothing to offer them, because we still here. I'm talking about, they talk about, say, let's talk real, we talking real family, I'm talking to my family, the ones that really wanna talk real right now. They talk about the poverty and crime in the city. And they put it right next door to you, because you go and you support that. So we gonna have real conversations, let's have real conversations. I love my city, I'm gonna have a real conversation with you.
Mr. Maine?
No, hold on, but that's the key. We gotta be willing to stand up and work and hold each other accountable, then bring it ourselves, because nobody's coming. When I'm calling the Walmarts, calling the McDonald's, calling the A- Applebee's, calling these places, it's nobody, they like, nah, I'm looking at the demographics, no. No, 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 I'm not coming there. And then they see us on this body and how we at each other. And then they come into the city hall and people that have their own agendas. It's that part that make it hard to do business in the city. So that's the stuff that we gotta be talking about, family, like, this is a family conversation, rea- the reality of it. So, a- and I'm just saying, it, 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 it's enough is enough. If we gonna work together and build together, we can, it's six point two square miles, it's a city block in Detroit. Come on, we got the international airport right here, we got Michigan Avenue. I'm saying this all the time, everywhere I go, and if you know me, you know that's what I'm about. And I'm bringing people in here to try to do business in Inksster. But the reality is, is us. So go ahead, Councilwoman Wiley.
I just wanted to mention when you were saying, uh, about the crime and the poverty.
Perception of crime and perception of poverty, perception.
You wanted to say it.
Okay.
Is that a lot of this is not true.
That's right.
Because people come in from outside and do what they do here and we get the reputation. It's the same thing that's happening with the marijuana. These people don't live here, they're coming from outside, getting their money and then leaving. And we get the reputation of being marijuana city, you know? Because it's easy to put that type of thing on you. Like you were saying, people have to work together. I mean, there are all kinds of things that each of us should be doing on this panel right now, okay? And there are things we have been doing, you know what I'm saying? So, you're right, we need to work together, but we need to start building within. Because like I said, like you said, nobody's coming to save us, we have to do this ourselves. And so, uh, there's so much stuff that's out there. In fact, I have a friend right now who I've asked her to look into a couple of grants for the city. One has to do with the street, uh, and what she looked into, it was for Middle Belt and Michigan Avenue, you know? It's these things that we are sent out by, um, the governor and things like that, all kinds of things, we could each be doing that.
That's right, I agree.
That's all I want to say is that it comes from outside and then we get blamed for it.
No doubt about that, that's why I said the perception of it.
Here in Inksster are not like what has happened.
Yeah, I mean, it's a beautiful city, Inksster's one of the best cities in the world, I totally stand on that. But anyway, let's move forward, uh, you still had the floor, sir, go ahead.
I, I just wanted to leave this, I leave this, when we talk about what we don't have, okay? I found out, you know, I was born and raised in Inksster. When I hear people how about unity, quit bringing things together, okay? Uh, you, you don't never have nothing in this city as long as we keep complaining and, and cutting each other down and, 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 and. Whether it's unity, there's strength, and when people get together, they understand, we, we can make a difference, we can make a true difference. Okay, but one thing we have to do in this city, and I'm gonna tell you, if I don't live to see next week, just say this, okay? We got to learn to love one another, we got to learn to reason with one another, we have to learn to brace one another. These personal animosity, I don't like and this don't like this person here and this, you know, you ain't, you ain't gonna take this city nowhere, but keep taking it down. You know, you got people that sit here, can't get along, can't do this, it's, it's ti- time out for all of that, we need to brace one another. We need to brace them, I mean, I, I feel good a lot of times when, when I, when I, in this city that I can go next door. I don't have to walk all the way to, as y'all say, Kroger's and all that different things, I can go next door to the old lady, I say, I need some milk.
The African market, let's stop it, the African market, right on East Road, Michigan Avenue, it's a beautiful store, how many people been in there?
There's a lot of different places that we-
Five people? You know, been in the African market, there's a beautiful market, I'm talking, I got everything we need, even better, healthy stuff for you? I mean, that's the type of stuff I'm talking about. But we gotta stop living in this world, Inksster is a great place, but what are you doing? You, the African market, five people?
You know, Inksster always been like that.
That just, I'm, I'm-
I was born and raised in this city, let's be quiet, I was born and raised in this city. All I ever see people do in this city, okay? They'll get up here, they'll talk about you, nah, we ain't gonna do this, we're not gonna do that here, I don't like that place, I don't like. But you'll go a thousand miles to Kroger's, a thousand miles somewhere.
Sure do.
To go and, and buy your groceries, and then you know what? There are some, there are some markets in Inksster, it's cheaper than Kroger's. Now, y'all wanna challenge me?
Uh, no.
Okay?
Okay.
Okay, I'll challenge you that, I'll go right up, huh?
You ready, we about, we need to get into the public hearing.
I challenge you, I, I go, I go right up there to that, uh, what's that place you go?
You talking about Dean's Market?
No, no, I'm talking about the, the supermarket on our-
Food Max?
Food Max.
Food Max? We know people talk about Food Max like, oh, but, but, but anyway. Let's do, let's do this, because this is what we called, this is what we called this meeting for, this is a public hearing. And it's for us to hear from the public. When you approach the podium, we gonna give you one, one minute? One, two, all right, I'll give you two. You know I love, you know I love you, but two, for sure, I got you two, because there's a lot of people wanna address this body. And we ask that you be respectful, please, of each other and each other's time. And at the same time, when you come up, say your name for the record, please, okay? Um, we don't have a order, so, who, who wants to go first, anybody? Come in now, no, you need to talk into the mic and say your name, please, thank you, sir.
Good evening, Mayor and Council, residents, Hardy Robbs, good to see you all. It's been a little while, been, we're working a little bit hard, too hard, but, uh, what I wanna say is that, as Brother Williams say, you know. It's about coming about together and love one another, and as our mayor said, hey, we have to find something to do to create some, uh. Cre- create revenue here in the city, and just as Ms. Watley said, okay, and the other, uh, co- uh, Ms. Howard has said. Hey, we have to draw a limit and line somewhere, as everyone say, but we have to find a way to keep funds coming through the city. Everybody talk about this and that, about the marijuana-
Excuse me, we are in session, please. Go ahead, sir, I'm sorry.
About marijuana, uh, businesses or whatnot, but, uh, we have to find a way to, as we said. Uh, but, put them in ours, you know, our separate areas, our zone areas, but also find a way to market it to the folks there. Like, we, we're right here ten minutes from the airport, we thirty minutes from every city around, around, uh, you know, around Michigan. Car, Jacks, Jackson, Michigan, you know, Ann Arbor, Michigan, to, to east, deepest east to Ohio, all the way back up to Pontiac. You know, we right there, so when folks coming in town, we have to, coming in through that airport, we have to market that. If that's the way to get funds, but we have to keep it in a controlled environment, a controlled area, because as I said. We have to figure out a way to get funds going in the city. But in any case, God bless you all, I wanna tell you, spread love.
All right, thank you, did you say your name for the record?
My name is Hardy Robbs, and also, I must say to my councilperson, uh, Ms. Washington, that we have in my area, District Two. We're in a road, I know one area, one, thirty cents.
The public hearings.
Oh, public hearing, all right, but we got this water coming through there though.
Yep, 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 it's only for this, sir, thank you, sir. Okay, next person, please. Yep, you're on the timer, I got you.
My name is Andrew King, um, newly, new resident to Inksster. And I have to say, I came here from Detroit and I love what I came into. I brought, I'm in the process of buying a home, I have a six-year-old son. In the middle of my block, they're building a grow house. Didn't know it was coming, I didn't know it was gonna be there when I got there, but I'm here now and I'm looking at this unsightly area where they're trying to build a grow house. And I'm not appreciative of that, because I have a son and I want him to be able to go outside and not smell marijuana in the air while he's playing with his toys. When you have more marijuana dispensary than you have schooling, schools, there's a problem. When the focus is, we're here, and I'm glad that all of us agree that we, we should put a cap on this. And we can't go back and undo what was done, but from this day forward, we don't need to be the marijuana capital of Michigan. We don't, we just need to be Inksster, the best version of Inksster we can possibly be. Getting our schools back, getting kids into school, getting programs and community active, act- activities for our kids, and this consumption places. If I'm not mistaken, uh, chief, isn't there a law against operating under the influence of weed, of marijuana? So if we have a consumption place where people are driving to smoke and they're driving home, they're putting Inksster residents in danger. In the transportation while they're going to smoke, if you wanna smoke weed, that's for your own, that's what you do in your house, that's what you do with your friends. But we don't, we should not have buildings and businesses where people are allowed to smoke weed and put our residents in danger. After they decide to have their resi- their entertainment, if you will. We, I appreciate what this council is doing, and I hope that the city backs you in the resolution that you're, we're coming up with. To change this so that we can move forward in a positive way and refocus on our future without marijuana. Grow, multiple marijuana houses growing, and I have ten more seconds, just wanna say thank you for this opportunity. And I hope that we all share the same vision for Inksster growing.
Uh, Sandra, I got, I got him, Sandra, yes, Sandra, thank you, Sandra, come on. You got you, come on, yep. Yeah, S A N D R E D, yeah, I got you. Go ahead, sir, go ahead, sir.
Name is Sam Moody, I'm, uh, born and raised Inksster, Michigan. So, I own a clothing brand, I just recently moved back from California, I was there for the past five years. Um, got to do a lot of great things, uh, spread the name of Inksster, Michigan. I have been able to cross-brand my clothing brand into the marijuana industry. I've had the number one selling strand throughout California, I've won all types of awards, all types of stuff like that. New business opportunities, real estate, all different type of stuff that came from dealing with marijuana. I'm not here to say we need to open more dispensaries or anything like that. But the resources we have now available, we need to allocate them better, because there's no way that all this stuff is going on. And we're not able to benefit from that on our community, it's no, it's no reason why it's no black owned dispensaries, it's no reason why it's no black owned. Um, caregiver sites and so on and so forth. So, I feel like that we, instead of going at each other, everybody in the community, we need to really look at what's going on, where's that money going? And, um. I know that it's twenty to thirty different, uh, small business owners I know throughout the city, my age, some younger, some older. It's over twenty, thirty empty vacant business buildings that's not being used. Why are we not figuring out a way to offer those to people in the community who are profiting in their small businesses? Out of their kitchens, out of their homes, out of their basements, out of their backyard, whatever the case may be. When I'm in California, um, it's a group of Latinos that's, uh, on the council. And they're giving shops that are now turning to full collision shops that are being ran by people my age. Because the community is giving them opportunity, so instead of talking about what all the young people not doing, we not giving them opportunity to do anything. We just talking about what they not doing. So, I'm here to speak for those youngsters that are younger than me, older than me, but I've actually made it to be to a successful point. So hopefully, I actually hear where I'm coming from and I'm able to sit down and talk to any of you whenever available.
Thank you, Sam.
That's all I gotta say.
All right, thank you, Sam. Next person, please. State your name for the record, please.
Yeah, uh, good afternoon, Councilman, Mayor. Um, my name is Terrence Hicks, and, uh, a reason I, I'll do, one question that I have to ask is that I see that a number of. There are other disciplines besides cultivation and growing in dispensaries, there's secure transporters. There's testing facilities, and my question is, is there any consideration to expand? To allow, if you are allowing four dispensaries, are you allowing one or two secure transporters? Or testers, or things of that nature? Uh, I'm not clear on that, um, because it looks like, uh, a lot of the focus is on what, uh, are moneymakers, so to speak, so.
Yeah, they're, that's in the ordinance, that's in the business license packet itself, so that's something the council adopted back in two thousand fifteen. Um, just the interest, because like what you just said, the money's not, it's a little different.
Yeah, I get the focus, but-
Definitely, definitely, we're definitely, it's definitely on the books currently, to allow, uh, secure transporters and testing facilities.
Okay, thanks for your time.
Yes, sir. Anyone else? Good evening. State your name for the record, sir.
Joseph Hamilton.
All right, go ahead.
Everybody here talking about, um, the dispensaries and stuff, I just got one question. How many people have they hired in our area? What jobs did they create for us? So how did this evolve without y'all putting a buffer there?
Yeah, so, so we are, because of all of the comments, we are currently now surveying the dispensaries and cultivating centers. As it relates to how many residents they have, that's, that's part of that. But what Ms. Dixon was saying, the city planner, moving forward, we're adding to the business license process. And the licensing process, which is, which is the social equity component, saying that you have to have so many people from Inksster. So twenty percent of your, you know, workforce, you know, the, what, wh- what people have to understand too is that, you know. We're the, 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 the government, this is the local government, so we make the rules, but we can't, you know. Tell people who they can hire, who they have to hire, but with the social equity piece that's regulated through the state for a person to get a license. We are able to do things like that.
Okay, because if, if, I believe if we all was to go to a dispensary. We not gonna see nobody of our ethnic descent in there.
That's not true.
Saying, we not gonna see, the majority of the dispensaries is not hiring a person like me or anybody else in there. You know what I'm saying, and then the people that they hiring ain't out of the city of Inksster. And I think that in the language of however y'all look at it, from this point forward, it should be some kind of concessions there for. This people of Inksster being able to get jobs in these dispensaries, whether it is security. Sales, cleaning, cultivating. Cutting the yard, whatever. You know, Inksster should be enriched in some kind of way.
That's right, that's what we're proposing. Thank you, okay, anyone else?
Hello, everybody, my name is Tony Edmonds. I'm coming here tonight because, um, I grew up and was raised in Inksster myself, went to Inksster High from nineteen sixty-two to nineteen seventy-nine, I left here. I left, I come to, um, actually apologize to everyone here, because I left Inksster. I've done a great job in other cities and building all kinds of stuff, the mayor, we talked about this. Actually, we talked about this really well, and so what I've proposed, my team, we're coming here to bring things to Inksster. I don't wanna talk about some things we talking about right now, because I can't, but we gonna bring some things, I want anybody who wants to work with my team. We already have the investment, we already have the people, all of that, we need ideas and things to do. I wanna redevelop Inksster to make it like it was when I was growing up, the mayor was too young to remember how great Inksster used to be. But Inksster used to be a great place, we was all proud of it, all of that, my mother and father worked it for a motor company, we was all living great here at one time. Everything was good, um, Inksster High was a place that we was all proud of, I'm so, I'm so sad Inksster High is gone. I didn't even know it till I came back to reunion when I finally met the mayor, I didn't even know Inksster High was gone, I came back, that didn't make sense to me. So me, Hicks is one of my partners, Robin Lavelle is one of my partners, I have several. We have, um, funding companies, all of this, I'm doing a lot of stuff outside, and I come here- And I come here and I got kinda tears in my eyes, I'm sorry. Because I came back here and I'm ashamed of all of us who went through Inkster High and all of that, and we have a lot of great people who went through there. And we went everywhere else, I went to Atlanta like everybody else did, and did a lot of great things there. And I haven't done anything in Inkster. All of us need to stop talking about what we could do. And, um, and I got smacked in the face with that, you know, so, um, I'm coming back, I'm gonna put a lot of money in Inkster. I'm bringing other people, and I want anybody who got any ideas, like the young man said, I would like to help you, young man. Um, we need to get all of these buildings and open them up for young people. We, you know, a lot of the cities are doing it, but we not listen to the young people either. And so, I'm sorry, thank you for listening to me, bye-bye.
Thank you. Okay. Ms. Hankerson, I saw you, was you coming up? Come on, come on, guys. Ladies always first.
Good evening, everyone, Rochelle Wells.
Go ahead.
Um, I wrote an email to every councilperson on this board, Rep., um, Patrick, except you, because you were administrative head. But in February, I sent that, um, an email to everyone, which says, as, as a long-life member of, and citizen of the city of Inkster, uh, I would employ you to collectively vote against opening large amounts of dispensaries. In essence, what this letter is saying is that the citizens of this city deserve much better than dispensaries, grow places. We deserve places that all citizens can go to, that all citizens can benefit from. And that, that goes from me as a senior to my grandchildren or your grandchildren. It goes from dining to recreational, to fun activities, and all other aspects that this city needs to have. And collectively, this can happen, just like collectively, this conversation is going on. However, I just ask that you would pay attention to what the seniors have put into this city? And what we expect to get out of it? And I don't think that as seniors, we're gonna get much out of the, the marijuana dispensaries. However, I understand that progress is progress. And I do hope, hope you understand also that enough is enough. We, we have three working dispensaries. There's two buildings on Michigan Avenue that are up already. One next to the Flight Club and one at Mr. Howard's place. Now, that's considered part of the green area, am I right?
You're right.
So, where are the rest of them going?
That's the area that they're talking about.
And on the other side of, and also on the other side of Michigan Avenue, right? On the north and the south side of Michigan Avenue, you're proposing to put other dispensaries, is my, is what I got from this meeting. So, do we have a DDA?
No, well, you do, but it's, it's, it's not compromised correctly.
Right, so, do you think that would help to work out something that would be viable for the district, the main district of the city?
An inkstrow of cannabis?
Yes.
Correct, that's based off your master plan.
Yeah, okay, so I'm just seeing that, some other things need to be discussed other than dispensaries, thanks so much.
You're welcome. Anyone else?
Good evening.
Good evening.
I'd just like to say.
State your name for the record, please.
Shirley Hankerson.
Go ahead.
Lifelong citizen of, of Inkster. I voted for marijuana, I even spoke about marijuana, as a matter of fact, for you. To become the first person to have a dispensary in Inkster, and I think you're doing our city a disservice by allowing all these people to come in and make money off of a poor city. We still don't have a downtown development, that's why we don't have anything to offer anybody when they call. If you spend as much time with marijuana as you on our downtown development, as you do on marijuana, we would have a downtown.
But that's not true, so.
Okay, but that's, you never speak about it, I never, we never hear anything about it, anybody, any councilperson know anything about a downtown development? Oh, I guess not. But yeah, but that's how I feel about it, and it's not that I'm against marijuana, trust and believe. Oh, and that land that you're speaking about where the golf course used to be on Michigan Avenue? Check and see if Gabe Hatcher owns that, okay? 'Cause I believe he does, so he'll be the billionaire once he's done taking land away from us here in Inkster, alright?
Okay, next person. Okay.
Robert Lavelle, longtime resident of Inkster. Good evening.
Speak to, into the mic.
Evening, uh, council members and also Mr. Mayor. I just wanna say this, I'm gonna be real brief. I think that, um, the cannabis that you have, the provisional centers, just hold them accountable. For the ones that you have now and for the future, hold them accountable, that's why the city ain't getting that money. You need to hold them more accountable, instead of like that young lady just said, they getting that money, they leaving it out of here. I'm about business, I live here, I grew up here. I'm gonna put that money right back where I grew up at, right back here, 'cause I wanna see it flourish. And all I say again to each and every one of you guys, you're saying the right thing. Let them put the money back and hold them accountable for the future ones and the ones that are there now. Young lady over here said they take that money and they leave it back up out of here, and that's the truth. Bring it here, I think we'd do a lot better as a city. Hold them accountable, Mr. Mayor, thank you.
Okay. Anyone else? State your name for the record, please.
My name is Tyree Connor, good evening, residents, um, as an avid weed smoker, I do agree with everybody. It's enough for the dispensaries, we got enough. But again, as the youngsters say, Mr. Moody, we need to find out more about the marijuana resource, 'cause us going back and forth, ain't nobody really saying nothing, ain't nobody really doing nothing. But it's money in the marijuana industry, not just for smoking, clothes, him. We need to get educated on it and hold each and every one of us accountable for the, you know, people hackling in the back. But like you say, Mayor, what are you doing? What are we doing to help this city? You know, the same, it's the same thing over and over again, but we need to hold each other accountable to help each other to bring more resources. 'Cause it's, again, the youngins, the youngsters, Mr. Moody, it's their time. The senior citizens, we're not taking anything from you, what you built from Inkster, but you need to let it go. It's, it's, your time is up, no disrespect, youngins, we don't even got a place for them to go, to hang out. To, to just chill, to, and it's so many youngsters got ideas for this city, but the old, the elders just bash them out, cut them off, we ain't got time for that, all you wanna do is this, that. No, listen to these youngsters, listen to these other residents. Uh, question for you, Chief. How many accidents or major crimes didn't happen since the weed dispensary's been here?
Very minimal.
How many, how many car accidents or, or anything, any, and the smell, there is no odor. There is no odor, I drive Inkster every day, there is no odor. So, that, that's all I have to say, we need to come together and stop this nonsense, bickering, if everybody love Inkster like they say they love it. Like they say they love it, 'cause what are, what are you doing? What are we doing? You're doing a wonderful job, continue with your administration, even the hassle Ms. Watley give you, and it's out of love. It's out of love, 'cause she loves this city. That's all, and, and George Will, it's just all out of love, we need to hold each other accountable.
Alright, bro. State your name for the record, please.
Yes, sir, Rebecca Daniels, resident of the city of Inkster. I would like to say that everybody in this room definitely agree with one thing, and that is that we do not want our city filled with marijuana. That's one thing we all know that we can agree upon. What I think we need to concentrate on is what we are dealing with, what we have now. And that is where I think our focus is messed up at, we got to deal with what we got. We got legal issues going on, if we don't allow people that have already put the applications in, be able to do business here. We have these buffers, from what I understand, that are in place, that are to protect us from not having as many marijuana facilities as we think we may have, correct me if I'm wrong.
Miss, correct.
The buffers, that's why they were put there. I wrote this question down, do the buffers create a maximum at present, right now?
Yes.
Okay, my second question is, the green zone that we are proposing, 'cause I'm talking about what we dealing with, because we gotta deal with what we dealing with right now, because it is what it is. And this is what we got to do together, we gotta agree to disagree or agree. So, the green zone that we are proposing to have will correct this problem with these applicants that have already come in, that we, that the mayor has already said, that that was that part we missed. Right, those applicants got in here and were able to apply for these marijuana businesses. Okay, so if those marijuana, those, those businesses will now have the opportunity to have their business in that green zone, therefore that would cut down on the cut down on legality. Just let me know what I'm doing, 'cause you're making me lose my concentration.
That, that was too many, that was a too many mark. That was too many mark.
Okay, so, the green zone that has the green zone that has been put in place, will that
Can you answer a question, please?
I'm saying that can be, that would be put in place.
Answer a question, please.
Would it cut down, would it stop the legality that could take place?
I think it would, tremendously, yes.
Thank you, if we say no more, what happens legally?
Okay. Because the green zone is not doing what she said it's doing.
Well, the greens on wood.
But these people, this race to the finish.
The greens on wood, what are we talking?
No.
Uh, hold on, hold on, let me make this make sense. Let's just make this make sense. And, and, and let's just make this make sense, because what she said was, and David just answered the question. If, if, if you allow the ones that's there now currently trying to get the race to the finish, you allow them in that zone, then you think they gonna sue you, what they gonna sue you for?
But they knew, you all sat there, said a minute ago, they knew what they were getting into. They were getting into when they say.
Do what they do.
So, that, that was
That's what you're saying, I get what you're saying, but the question was, was that if you put in the green zone, would it eliminate all that?
But that gives, that gives the impression that that's going to solve the problem, it's not gonna solve the problem.
Well, it would solve the problem.
No, it's not, because right now
It would solve the problem, why wouldn't it?
No, it would just add more marijuana.
I get what you're saying, but you saying two things. Okay, come on, come on, now, state your name for the record, please.
I really wasn't gonna speak on this subject, the reason why I'm gonna speak on this subject.
Speaking to Mike.
The reason why I'm gonna speak on this subject is because all you council people here is afraid of what might happen. But think about when we had to pay for dents, we had to pay for seven, was it seven point some million dollars of the police suing us. So, we as taxpayers are saying, no more, then we gonna pay for it, so we'll pay for it, you thought on our taxes anyway. So don't be scared to vote no, that's all I'm saying.
Alright.
There's Big Mama.
Mayor and council and the residents of the city of Inkster, Barbara Cooper. Now, all these places came and said what they were going to do for the city. They took down our numbers and all this, and they gonna contact us and they gonna help all the organizations in the city of Inkster. Now, the good fellas didn't get anything, I don't know if any other organization got anything. But they were just saying, oh, yes, we gonna help you, we gonna do this and we gonna do that. So now, how do we make them do what they said they gonna do, be accountable for what they said they were gonna do? And it's on tape, 'cause it was in a meeting, of what they, every last one of them that got up here. That one night, that lady in that red dress, she was up there with everybody. And we ain't seen her since that meeting. She was a, I think she might have been attorney or representative or something, but she was with four or five of them that was coming up. And they all said, oh, we gonna help this community, we gonna make it grow, we gonna build it. Oh, we here for the, we here for every organization, and we gonna give you money and we gonna do this. And it come time for them to do something, you can't even find them.
Yeah, the only one that did something was Alan Murkowitz.
Exactly, just one. But it's more, it's, but he been doing it, I think, a little longer, thank you. But all these new ones.
Well, little Joe Romano too.
I don't know, he, he, he not with the good fellas, not with the good.
You saying it on the record, I just wanna be.
Yeah, so I'm just saying, how do we make them accountable?
Well, that's the
You coming in, you coming in our city, you telling us what you gonna do for the city, and then you don't do anything. So now, we gotta wait till they get their buildings up, or some of them already have them up. And so, I'm just wondering, when they gonna help the city, that's all.
I totally agree. Okay, anybody else?
You need to let them know that you can't make them people do nothing.
That's what we talking about with the social equity.
You can't make them do nothing.
That's true, okay, a motion to, are we, anybody else? Okay, a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved, Mr. Chair.
Second.
They moved to second, any discussion on that? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Alright, let's get off into the city's business quickly. We're still in session, we're still in session, please. Alright. Hearing any boards, I'm sorry, consent agenda?
So moved.
Second. They moved it properly, second, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any nays? Eyes have a motion, carry, boards and commissions, anyone? Alright, moving right along, um, the first reading of the ordinance. Well, not the entire ordinance. Okay, okay, you gonna get it? No.
I thought this is classified as the reading, like.
Yeah. Do we have to read the whole thing into, right now?
No.
No. What should we do?
I thought this time just classified as it, as the reading, like in the past, when we just
We just, right, we just supposed to just go through both, alright, good then, perfect, moving into new business, item, fire. Item, okay, item A, please, city clerk.
The first item in new business is discussion or action considering approval to support the recreational passport and Michigan National Resources Trust Fund grant applications through the Michigan Department of Natural Resources.
What's your pleasure?
So moved, uh, support, or second.
They moved to second, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any nays? Eyes have a motion, carries, item B, please.
Consider approval to accept funding in the amount of eighty-five thousand nine hundred and fifty-five dollars from the Wayne County Parks Milletch Fund for park improvements pending the approval of the Parks Division and the Wayne County Commissioner.
What's your pleasure?
So moved, second.
They moved it properly, stake in any discussion.
This is, um, to the chair, this is just money we're getting, it's not something we have to, uh, pay part of or pay back or this is just a, a grant to us.
Yeah, so, so basically, um, every year, the Parks and Rec Commissioners receive a certain amount of money for their district. So just like, um, our person used to do in the past, what's his name?
Glenn Anderson.
Glenn Anderson, yeah, Commissioner Anderson, used to do for us in the past, he was only giving us five thousand dollars of the eighty-five thousand allocation. So he was getting eighty-five thousand each year, and he would give the city of Inkster five thousand every year. So, this year, David Kudnisik is saying that he's giving us the whole allocation.
I remember when he made this presentation.
Next year.
Glenn Anderson just split it up among all of his responsibilities.
Yeah, three communities.
Giving it, so, but, uh, I understand that.
Yeah, but that's what it is, it's the same thing as that, it's just not five thousand and eighty-five, okay? Anything else? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any nays? Eyes have a motion, carries, alright, going into public participation. We asked if you have already spoke in the public hearing as it relates to We asked if you have already spoke in the public hearing as it relates to the reading. Then we forego that, but I will still call you. Pastor Jean Overman?
Good evening.
Good evening.
I, I have a, a, a list. I was just praying I'd be first because I have to go, so. So, a couple of things we said about the great things that happened in Inkster and how to share. I think we need to toot our own horn more. We have Najah who's next door who's nationally recognized by CNN, Woman of the Year, and the work she's been doing consistently here in the city of Inkster. So, I think we need to figure out how to celebrate and make sure people understand. I know you guys were there, I saw the pictures, but when there's someone that is globally recognized and she's right there, I think everyone in our city need to be made aware of that more than once or twice. And I'm here to beg because we need volunteers at Mother's Pantry. There is a need to be open more days than Wednesdays and Thursdays. So, we are looking at getting back to client choice where you come in and shop, and we would like to be open Tuesday, Wednesday, and Thursday. So, we are looking for volunteers for the pantry, probably ten. And the good thing about being a volunteer at Mother's Pantry, the senior alliance will stipend and pay you if you are over sixty-five. The next thing is, we're looking for ambassadors for Camp Inspire. They are also paid between the ages of eighteen and twenty-four, preferably college students with STEM futures. And we need campers, so fifth grade through twelfth, we're looking for thirty young people. They will be kind of stipend like upward bound. So, for those of you that are familiar with the Trio Program, Camp Inspire is now doing that. And lit young people, men and boys and girls, ages fourteen through twenty-four. So, that is the request. I will put this in a digital format and send it so that it could be shared on our community screen. But let's remember Najah, Ozzy, and Zaman International and that work, and all the other many organizations in the city of Inkster that do this work every day without salaries because they love and work in this community. Thank you.
All right. Yvonne Moore?
Good evening, Mayor and Council and our residents of Inkster. I'm actually coming to invite all of you to the Inkster Task Force Unity in the community with the city of Inkster, our own Mayor Patrick Wimberly, of the Inkster Police Department, Wayne County Sheriff Raphael Washington, also Detroit Rescue Mission Ministries, um, Dr. Chad, uh, Arti. So, I would like to let you know and that this will be on Saturday, this coming Saturday, April eighth, at the Rex Center, which is twenty-twenty-five Middle Belt, from eleven to three o'clock. We are still in need of volunteers, we still are in need of donations, um, to make sure that the kids have a really, really good time. We are asking, I heard all the love and unity, but let's you know, don't just talk it. Let's, let's do it. You know, I'm tired of all of us being in a community as we say six point, what, two mile radius? And everybody's so busy trying to do their own thing and want their own recognition. Come on, y'all, we supposed to be unity, we supposed to be together. And there's no way that we are supposed to not all be together to have one big hurrah for all of our children that live in Inkster and the surrounding areas. I mean, I hate, I hated to bring this out, but you know, you say you love me, you don't love me, because how can you love me and then the next thing you say, oh, well, we don't, you know, I, I can't help you. This is not something just for, for me, my kids, or anybody else. We all live in Inkster, everybody. And we should all come together to help whatever it is for our kids. Thank you.
All right, all right. Brother Cooper?
Did she say what it was?
Oh, it's, uh, yeah, this Saturday.
The jig, the egg drop, though, the Easter egg drop, but I never heard it say.
Eleven to three, yeah. The Easter egg drop, this the Easter egg drop for the kids. Eleven to three, we gonna have a helicopter out and all that good stuff. Chief, Chief Ratliff is driving the helicopter.
Can you say that, can you say that time again? It's from eleven to three?
About eleven to three.
All right, once again, Barbara Cooper, this time I'm representing the Inkster Goodfellas. On April the twenty-eighth, we will be having No Trial Without a Christmas, our fish and spaghetti dinners. And we would like for everyone in the community to come out and support the Goodfellas. From eleven to four-thirty, dinners are fifteen dollars and it'll be held at the Booker Dozier Recreational Complex. And I got in trouble for just saying the complex. And my uncle told me if he ever hear me say that, and I said, you right, Booker Dozier. Excuse me, Booker T. Dozier. Recreational Complex is where it's going to be held. And I would like for everybody to come out and support the Goodfellas, No Trial Without a Christmas. And I do have tickets, and I'll be back at the next meeting. So, anybody that wants the tickets, you can get them today, or you can get them at the, when you see me again, or any of our members, because we all have tickets.
All right.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Uh, you got any flyers yet?
No, the flyers will be coming out. Shirley's working on them.
Okay.
Okay, Councilman Chisholm, you heard that?
Yep, thank you.
All right, Ruthie Williams?
That's how they were handed to me, ma'am, I apologize.
I'm Ruth Williams again. I'm gonna speak on behalf of the Memorial Day Parade. I'm hoping everybody there up here have their information, so you won't say like you did last year. I didn't know about it. May twenty-ninth, we're starting at noon, we're locating once again at Cherry Hill and Inkster Road. So, get your applications in. If you don't have them in, the Goodfellas, what do you have, Goodfellas? The Goodfellas is gonna be part of selling hot dogs, raise money, so. Chief, I need the polices.
We gonna all be out there. Look at you, you know what, I ain't messing with you right there. Uh, Mrs. Hankerson? All right, Tia Wells? Sorry about that. We gonna get out of here.
Good evening, everyone.
Evening.
I'm just here to remind you that the Inkster Chamber of Commerce will be having its annual mixer, which is May sixth, twenty-twenty-three. It's from four-thirty PM to two AM, and it's gonna be amazing. If you guys are not there, y'all gonna be mad the next day when you hear about what we have. So, we're doing a, a Derby, a Kentucky Derby celebration, and the proceeds will benefit the, uh, Inkster Summer Fest. And as you know, this year is our twenty-fifth anniversary celebration. So, that's big, that's major, y'all. So, I need y'all to come out, support. We have tickets available. You can check with me, uh, Ruthie, Octavia in the back, there she is.
Colts for kids and Toys for Tots, I believe, too. It's gonna be, or Goodfellas, I'm sorry, Goodfellas. There's gonna be some of those proceeds are going to them too as well.
Um, I know that the chamber is oftentimes, you know, involved in, in helping.
Oh, yeah.
Open across the community, you know how it goes. So, if you need the tickets, uh, there are some flyers available. We put some over there on the table. If you need to know anymore about it, check with us.
Um, the location is at the new Inkster.
It's at the Inkster Civic Arena, yes, yes, and it was beautiful.
Been developed downtown Inkster, that you can see with your own eyes.
It's gonna be lit, let me tell you. It is amazing. And, 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 and if you get there early enough, hey, you might have a chance to catch you a horse, a real horse.
Yeah.
So, I'm telling y'all to come on down. It's at twenty-seven zero seventy-seven, uh, Michigan Avenue.
Make sure you get, uh, Ms. Hankerson a ticket on me.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah, I want her to see, I want, I want her to see what we, what we doing. Obviously, she can't see. Yeah, go ahead, yeah.
I will do that.
Yeah, give her, give her a ticket on me.
I will do that, but make sure you guys all tell your friends, tell your family.
Matter of fact, give her a plus one.
Give her a plus one.
Yeah, there you go, yeah.
I got you, I got you.
I want to see her what we doing in downtown Inkster. There you go.
Okay, all right, yeah, because we are doing big things, and when you see it, it's gonna be amazing, so. And our event is the first event at the Inkster Civic Arena.
Yeah.
So, we're the grand.
Maybe the first time anybody sees the facility is.
Yes, so you gotta be there, you gotta be there. All right, love you all, good night.
All right, Octavia Smith?
Good evening, Mayor and Council and residents. First of all, I'm glad just to be here tonight. I haven't had an opportunity to be here in a minute. So, as you see, Ms. Tia Wells and the committee who is running, um, the Derby this year made the announcement for that. So, I'm just gonna go over the other announcement that I have for everyone else. Of course, I haven't seen none of y'all at Western Wayne Family Health Center for Zumba or yoga, right? Mondays, six to seven, Tuesdays and Thursdays for Zumba, six to seven, free of charge in the city of Inkster. So, if you want to get your health on, come on ba, come on down. I also wanted to share with everyone and ask you to save the dates, because Inkster Task Force Farmers Market will be back Wednesdays, four to seven, two-seven-zero-two-zero, Michigan Avenue. Now, Inkster Market from Detroit is one of our vendors, but we're also looking for growers from this city, because a lot of people do a lot of farming here in Inkster, and we want to make sure you are able to come and share your produce and sell your produce as well. Um, the Friends of the Ridge, in the city of Inkster, we are going to have a free paddle day for the Inkster residents on April, on August the twelfth. Now, this coming Earth Day, which is Saturday, April the twenty-second, there is a log jam day where Inkster residents can come and help move those logs out of the riv, out of the ridge so that we can go through with our kayaks. You know, um, it takes a minute to move those log jams. So, it is online, the registration. Come on down and help us clear those log jams. If you don't have waiters, they do offer them to you. We want to come out, Inkster, we want, this is for us. So, we want to come out and support our own city and make this city great, just like it used to be, or even greater, and I thank you so much.
All right, just like it is, it's a great city. All right, then, just for the record, uh, the young man he had to leave, Samuel Moody, uh, two-three, uh, five Harrison Avenue, they will be having a charity event at the New Allen Liquor Store. And we know that that is locally owned and operated on April the twenty, I'm sorry, April the eighth, from one to six PM. So, I just wanted to read that for the record. All right, Councilwoman?
Nothing, sir.
Okay, did I just skip over you, City Clerk? I'm sorry. Did you have anything?
I do.
You do?
I do.
Let me get quick on this. Go ahead, go ahead.
It's selection time again. If you're interested in running for any of the council positions or the mayor's position, uh, petitions are available in the clerk's office from eight-thirty to four. They are due back to the clerk's office, April twenty-fifth. So, here's the time to throw your hat in the rain, and that would be it.
All right, sound good. City Treasurer, you guys need more? Okay, you guys have anything to pertinent for everybody? Go ahead.
Today is official day.
Speak up, picture, you got your, a mic on, please.
That's all.
Okay, speak up.
Hello?
Yeah.
Did y'all hear me?
Go ahead.
Today's official day for compost starts today, so please be mindful of that when you put your compost bags out or you put your cans out, please had a sticker on it that says compost, or your can doesn't get thrown away and you call my office telling me they took your can. That's all I have.
Okay, good. All right, you say the spring clean? Yeah, please.
Uh, there are flyers on the table here, so pick up one on your way out for the spring clean. I see Mr. Henderson is not here tonight. But the first event will be the last Saturday of this month. It'll be the first event at the Rex Center, start at nine AM. We ask you all to come out. We're gonna buy coffee and doughnuts for you and some gloves and material, and let's begin to clean up the city like we do every summer. It'll go from April all the way to the end of October. All right, look in your calendars, always the last Saturday, except for May. It's the, it's the third Saturday in May because of the holiday. But the flyers are here, so pick up one on your way out the door. Thank you.
All right, I'm sorry, again, Councilwoman Wiley?
I'm fine.
Okay, Councilwoman Washington?
Uh, I would just like to, uh, bring this, um, make, um, Mr. Vivins, um, known of what, um, Hardy robbed, he came up here. I had a few calls from Birchwood and also from calls from the Mar, uh, where the Marathon Gas Station is on Inkster at Abidale. It's a lot of flooding over there to the point where people can't come out of their, like, backyards, like, to the angles. So, um, I'll just, I'll send that information to you and then we can try to get on it together. Yeah. Okay. Okay, thank you.
So, the one thing I think is very important, we got a lot of road projects going on in Inkster and a lot of infrastructure going on in Inkster. So, you got new piping, a butt up to new piping, old streets, a butt up to new streets and all of that stuff. So, we need to have a, a, a lease a town hall talking about that, so you can explain all of that. Okay, so let, let's, let's do that sooner rather than later, okay? All right, then, Councilwoman, Councilwoman, is there anything else?
No, I'm done.
Okay, Councilman Shaw?
Yep, yes, Mr. T, I just have, uh, just a couple of things.
Can you turn your mic on over there for him?
Oh.
Thank you, go ahead.
Um, just road patrol over on Rosewood, Harrison, I had a few incidents on those streets there, so if I could, get some road patrol over there. And also on North, Northwood, um, they, they were supposed to put gravel, Mr. Chair. They didn't put the gravel to level that Northwood out, so if.
Same thing with Indianapolis, so that's the contractor, so get back over there. Okay, so.
And that, and that's, that's all I have right now, Mr. Chair.
Okay, thank you, sir. Councilwoman Williams?
I love the Mary.
Councilman Chisholm?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, just for the community, this was a flyer that was shared with me. I know we have a lot of Inkster events coming up. Um, this one came from Mr. J. Simon over at Womack Temple Church. They're having their Easter food giveaway on April sixth, between two PM and four PM. Says local and national celebrities, sponsors include Dearborn Sausage, Absapir, Kroger, Forgotten Harvest, One-O-Seven-Five, Detroit Scratchers, Inkster Legends, and more. Again, that's at Womack Temple Church, Easter food giveaway, April sixth, between two and four PM, and I believe that is a Thursday. And I would advise that you get there a little bit early, because I've come home from work before on Middle Belt and seen traffic all the way back to, what is that, the skating rink, let's just put it that way.
Yeah, Northland.
Waiting to get
Sure.
to the church. So, um, I have been out there before helping out, and it's just quite the wait. So, that's why I just advise that you get out there, uh, early if you can. Other than that, I don't have anything. I yield the floor.
All right.
I don't have anything at this time, ma'am.
All right, then, uh, just for, just for the council, we do need to meet as it relates to the attorneys, RFPs. So, uh, email did go out as it relates to Wednesday, a few chimed in, a few didn't. But I know that probably Friday will work better for everybody, because I think a couple of people couldn't be here.
We sit here Wednesdays.
I know we said Wednesday, but a couple of people can't be there on Wednesday. Oh, Friday is the holiday, so what about Thursday? What about Thursday? Thursday could work for you? Could Thursday work for you, ma'am? Councilwoman Washington?
Um.
Thursday, Councilwoman Wiley? Six-thirty Thursday possibly for you, ma'am? Councilman Chisholm?
Yes.
Yes, Thursday's time.
Thursday, six-thirty?
I'll come Thursday.
Okay, Thursday, six-thirty for the, the attorney stuff. So, we're gonna actually go through the packets and all that good stuff, talk about that, break them down, and then we'll set another date for them to come and present to us and then make a selection, if that's what we're gonna do. Because you need to, yeah, you should. I mean, of course, we didn't have the packets now for how many day, we didn't, weeks? So, we didn't been through them, so listen, and then pick our tops or whatever, and then have them come present. Okay, all right, last thing, we received one point two million dollars for the, uh, Historical and Cultural Arts Museum through Senator Poe Henke's office. Um, we received half of that allocation so far, so we got to spend the six hundred before we can get the rest. But what we have to do within between is do some planning. So, as the concept is to redevelop the old library that says South River into our first historical museum for the community, we want to make sure that we have all the communities. the community, we wanna make sure that we have all the community's input, we know that we do have a historical and cultural, I mean, a historical board, um, which I don't know if they're active, but in each one of you, council people that's here, if you have a representative or yourself, we need to set a date so we can all come together and even possibly have a community town hall and just talk about how that process is gonna look. We are partnering with the Detroit Historical Museum, so they'll actually come out and kind of take the lead on it for us, so we can make sure we get everything right, and then working with our chief historian, who I like to call is Robert Turley, so, uh, Robert Turley is very engaged as it relates to the history of the city of Inkster, and we have a lot of memorabilia from, um, the Inkster alumni, uh, with Mrs. Deatrix Richardson, so we wanna make sure that we bringing all that stuff together and then putting it on display, we do have the money, um, we know that it can happen, uh, we actually, actually had to do, uh, um, basically a walkthrough, a survey of the building to make sure that's how much we needed to complete what we wanted to do, so we just, it's not an arbitrary number, one-point-two would get us to the finish line as it relates to having a turnkey, um, building, so I'm looking forward to all of your buy-in and comments and all of that good stuff as it relates to that, go ahead.
The structural problems been corrected with that building?
As it relates to?
They used to say it was sinking into the river.
That's what they used to say, that's what they used to say.
Okay, all right, yeah, yeah, so it's been cor- it's been corrected. Passed over, uh, go ahead, second one, go ahead.
The second question, what?
No, I'm just saying, getting me started, go ahead.
The second question is, did we reach out to the Charles Lake Drive Museum?
Yes.
Okay.
So they're part of the discussion as well, they're all part of, I didn't know this, but I did a tour of the Detroit Historical Museum as it relates to this, and Charles Lake Drive, they work in conjunction together, so they'll be all here in Inkster with us.
Yeah, um, I know, because you're talking about in that same area right there with the library, can, uh, Mr. Dixon and I guess, or some representative from his group come and give us an update about, uh, the progress they've made so far?
Yeah, uh-huh, yeah, we'll, we'll do that, uh, you know, they've been in the building like crazy over there, I know that they had the electrical engineers over there with DTE and Mr. Vivins talking about how we gonna split the power, combine the power, because the way that the builders were built in that area, that was a municipal complex, all of the power and HVAC was connected to the old city hall and the library.
Oh, wow.
Yeah.
That's some old technology.
Yeah, yeah, oh, oh, so. We gonna work through it though, we gonna work through it, okay, all right, anything else? Ma'am?
I have a question real quick.
Ma'am?
When we be getting a, um, update from Mr. Urban, what's his last name?
Frank Urban?
Yes.
Frank should be back next month.
Okay.
But, uh, we're pretty, we got a call from Senator Peters' office, this never happened, so I'm really excited about what's gonna happen from there, hopefully we get us a new DPW building, that's very needed, it's super needed. And animal control, so we're working on that, so, Peters called and asked us what did we need?
Right.
Shocked, okay. First, right, okay, anything else? Of all minds, decide if I call for adjournment?
So move.
Second.
Saying move it properly, second, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
If you say nay, you can stay.
Yes.
Hey, where she go, oh, she ran, she ran.